Hi, good evening. I will call to order the Elk Grove Planning Commission regular meeting of Thursday, November 21st, 2024 at 6:00 p.m. Let me start with the land acknowledgement. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plains Meowak, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Ranch area tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endured because of the bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders. At this point, would you please silence all your electronic devices, cell phones, et cetera? Thank you. And will the clerk read our customary greeting?
The Elk Grove Planning Commission welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the meetings. The commission reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice-dged item, as it may deem necessary. If you wish to address the commission during the meeting, please complete a speaker card, they're located in the back of the room, and give it to the clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item.
Thank you. Before I move to regular agenda, we do have a new member of the staff with us. I would like to ask Director Jordan to briefly introduce him and give him a full introduction later.
All right. Well, thank you. Good evening, Chair and Commission members, Christopher Jordan. I am very excited and proud to welcome Jason Hohn, our new Assistant Director for Development Services, to the team. He'll be joining us at these meetings and at council meetings, and will be overseeing the broader Development Services group, including planning, engineering, and building. And so we'll chat more later, but welcome, Jason.
Welcome.
Thank you. With that, would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioners Oscar O'Conne.
Present.
Sandra Poole.
Present.
Miranda Singh.
Present.
Vice Chair Juan Fernandez.
Present.
And Chair Suman Singhah.
Present. At this point, I would like to invite Jordan or Jason Hohn to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, would you please join us in a moment of silence? Thank you. With that, we will move to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those who are in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. With that, we are going to move to the public comment opportunity. Members of the audience may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission cannot take action on non-agendaized items raised under public comment until the matter has been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. So at this time, I will open the general public comment opportunity. Given that there are no speakers signed up, I will close the public comment opportunity, and we will move to the consent calendar items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar items, which is the regular meeting minutes of October 17, 2024?
Chair, I move to approve the October 17, 2024 minutes as prepared.
This has been moved. Do I have a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion is approved. With that, we will move to the public hearing items, and will the clerk please call the hearing items?
Item 5.1 is Risen Hope of the Christian and Missionary Alliance.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Commissioners, Carrie Whitlock, Strategic Planning and Innovation Program Manager. So this item is a conditional use permit for the Risen Hope of the Christian and Missionary Alliance. The project consists of a conditional use permit to allow 3,305 square foot assembly use within an existing 23,347 square foot multi-tenant building. No modifications to the site or the exterior of the building are proposed. The project site is located at 10-471 Grantline Road. The site includes an existing, single-story, multi-tenant building that is fully improved with an existing 105 space parking lot and associated landscaping. One currently vacant tenant space in the building is being proposed for lease as an assembly use. The site is bordered by vacant land to the north, industrial office use to the east and south, and the Highway 99 Grantline interchange to the west. The general plan land use designation is light industrial, and the zoning is MP, which is Industrial Office Park. Assembly uses do require a conditional use permit in the MP zone. The project is consistent with general plan policies. The conditional use permit is to use an existing 3,305 square foot space as an assembly use. This would include an approximately 1,200 square foot main sanctuary, two offices with a meeting space and storage space. Primary religious services would occur on Sundays between 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m., with approximately 30 attendees, and smaller religious study gatherings would occasionally take place on weekday evenings after 5:00 p.m. During normal workday business hours, the proposed use would be standard office functions. So access to the property is provided via existing driveways on the south side of Grantline Road to the north and from East Stockton Boulevard to the south. No changes to the parking area or landscaping have been proposed, nor have any exterior alterations to the building been requested as part of the project. The existing parking lot for this site contains 105 parking spaces. The existing uses and parking requirements are included here, along with the parking requirements for the proposed assembly use. The total parking required for all uses in the building, including the proposed use, is 85 spaces. So with 105 parking spaces, there is adequate parking to meet the needs of the tenant, including the proposed assembly use. In terms of environmental, the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to State SEQA Guidelines Section 15301 for an existing facility. And finally, staff recommends that Planning Commission adopt a resolution finding the project exempt from SEQA and approving the project subject to the conditions of approval in the resolution. And with that, the applicant is here if there's any questions, and I'm available for further questions as well.
Let me start with questions for staff.
So I had two questions. You mentioned there's no exterior changes proposed to the building, no signage, anything? Okay. And I didn't ask this in my briefing, thank you for the information in advance, by the way. You outlined the entire building, but it's only one space of the building that's being occupied?
Yes. Actually, in there, the red square shows the one unit that's proposed.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I'll declare the public hearing open and invite the applicant to speak.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jerry Lau. I'm the pastor of this very small church. I've lived in Sacramento my whole life, and I've moved and lived in Elk Grove for the last 10 years. It's a beautiful city. We hope to plant a church here where people could come and, you know, have spiritual renewal and be a part of the community. We hope to be a blessing to the community. If you have any questions, please let me know, and I'll try my best to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Lau? Thank you, Mr. Lau. I don't believe anybody has a question now. If there is anything, we'll ask you later.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will open the public comment opportunity. I believe there are no written or, and there is nobody signed up to speak, so I'm going to close the public comment opportunity. And therefore, the applicant does not need to respond as there were no comments. And I will therefore declare the public hearing closed and move to Commission deliberations and actions.
All of my questions are answered in the staff briefing. Just want to thank the staff for the thorough report.
Hearing nothing further, do I have a motion on this agenda item?
Chair Singhah.
Oh, you beat me to it.
I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution finding that the project exempt from SEQA pursuant to State SEQA Guideline Section 15301, and approving a conditional use permit for the Risen Hope of the Christian and Missionary Alliance project based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the draft resolution.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it is approved unanimously. Thank you. So with that, will the clerk please call the next action item?
Item 5.2 is Climate Action Plan and Elk Grove Municipal Code Amendments.
Good evening again. Carrie Whitlock, Strategic Planning and Innovation Program Manager. So this item is, the actions in this item include an addendum to the previously adopted and certified environmental impact report for the general plan and climate action plan, amendments to Measure BE5 for building, zero net energy buildings, and TACM9 for EV infrastructure in the climate action plan, and updates to Title 16, Building in Construction, and Title 23 zoning of the Elk Grove Municipal Code. We request Planning Commission review and provide a recommendation to the City Council. Just to be clear, the amendments proposed this evening are for our current cap, which was adopted in 2019. We're still in the process of a comprehensive update to the Climate Option Plan called the Climate Compass, and that work will take several more months and should be coming to Planning Commission in summer 2025. So the current language in Measure BE5 reads as Phase In Zero Net Energy Standards for New Construction, beginning in 2020 for residential projects and 2030 for commercial projects. Specific phase-in requirements and zero net energy compliance standards will be supported by updates in the triennial building code updates, beginning with the 2019 update. A zero net energy building is defined based on the California Energy Commission 2015 Integrated Energy Policy Report as a building where the amount of energy provided by onsite renewable energy sources is equal to the amount of energy consumed by the building. The important piece of this definition is the onsite requirement for renewable energy. At the time, the cap was adopted in 2019. The expectation was that ZNE requirements for new construction would be included in future updates to the Title 24 Building Energy Efficiency Standards in either 2019 or in 2022 updates. Neither of those updates actually included these requirements, nor does the current draft of the 2025 update. So rather than moving forward on, rather than moving towards the onsite inherent with the ZNE standards, the state has adopted solar photovoltaic requirements for new construction and has allowed community solar share programs to take the place of the onsite solar requirement. So the focus of the state has really shifted away from zero net energy onsite requirements and towards building decarbonization and either onsite or offsite renewable energy So while the ZNE standard may no longer be the focus for residential buildings, the city is still committed to reducing building sector greenhouse gas emissions and remaining consistent with the greenhouse gas reduction analysis completed as part of the cap adoption. So the proposed language change removes the ZNE standard for new residential construction projects and instead emphasizes the emission reduction needed. This language and the updated targets will ensure consistency with the GHG reduction analysis previously completed. The specific target figures were calculated based on the California Energy Commission's energy savings that were modeled for the 2022 Title 24 standards as part of the EIR conducted for the state code. So Measure TACM9 relates to EV charging. This measure has been updated with each code cycle as additional state requirements are instituted. The last amendments to the cap in December 22 made changes to ensure consistency with the 2022 California Building Code. The changes proposed here are again to be consistent with the intervening code cycle that went into effect on July 1st, 2024. The amendments include changes to the multi-unit residential and hotel-motel EV parking requirements and new power allocation alternative for non-residential construction. So in case you haven't memorized all the different level of compliance for EV chargers, EV capable spaces have the electrical installed and ready to support EV charging, but don't have any receptacle or charger installed with them. EV-ready spaces are EV capable with a receptacle, and that could just be a plug or it could actually be a charger. And then EVSC-installed spaces are EV-ready with a Level 2 or a DC fast charger already installed. So the changes for multi-unit residential and hotel-motel developments are shown here. Previously, there were different compliance levels required based on the number of units. This has been streamlined, so all units have the same requirements. New construction no longer needs to actually put in any EV capable spaces. However, there is a higher percentage of spacers which require at least a low-power Level 2 charging receptacle, which is now 40% from 25%. And 10% of all spaces must be equipped with a Level 2 EV charger, up from zero chargers for units under 20 and 5% for 20 or more units. For non-residential development, an alternative to the space allocation method is also now provided, using power allocation. The general principle is similar to the space allocation with higher requirements included for larger parking lots and flexibility in types of chargers installed, as long as there's one Level 2 charger provided. The changes to the municipal code are all related just to the EV charging requirements. With each state code cycle, EV requirements have continued to change with additional changes planned for the 2025 code. This has made it challenging to continually maintain consistency between the Climate Action Plan, the municipal code, and the state building code. So to help remedy this, the municipal code-proposed amendments would include greater reference to the latest state building standards code and would consolidate EV definitions in one location, just in Section 16, rather than including them in both Section 16 and Section So just to summarize the changes being proposed, for the cap, it's just these two measures being updated, BE5, to change from a zero net energy standard to decrease energy emission requirements, and for TACM9 to update EV charging requirements to match the state building code. And the municipal code updates are all related to EV charging and include changes in Section 16, Building in Construction, and Section 23 zoning. The proposed amendments to the cap and municipal code are considered a project under SEQA, and the general plan EIR, which was certified by City Council on February 27, 2019, also included the 2019 Climate Action Plan update and the 2019 zoning code amendments as part of the analysis. So this included an analysis related to building energy emissions reductions identified in BE5 and EV charging infrastructure improvements included in TACM9. So State SEQA guidelines provides that previously approved EIRs can be relied upon to approve subsequent changes to a project unless certain qualifications are exceeded that would require either an addendum to the EIR or a subsequent EIR or negative declaration. An addendum may only be prepared if changes to the project are occurring, but none of the specific conditions requiring a full EIR have occurred. So staff have reviewed and concluded that an addendum to the EIR is the appropriate document. Changes that are being proposed to the project are not substantial. The impact of the changes would be equivalent to or less than the impacts previously analyzed in the original EIR. The addendum identifies that for each of the project components and for each of the impact areas. There are no changes of physical circumstances that will cause a new significant impact or substantially increase the severity of the previously identified significant impacts, and there is no new information of substantial importance. So this is also documented in the addendum and the staff report. So finally, staff recommends that Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending to City Council that they adopt the addendum, that they adopt a resolution for the cap amendments to BE5 and TACM9, and adopt an ordinance amending the municipal code Title 16 and Title 23. And with that, I am available for any questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
I have one. You mentioned in, I think it was in the minimum spaces of EV-ready for future expansion of EVSC, low-power Level 2 is 220 volt. It's not like standard 110 wall power, correct?
For a low-power Level 2 charger? Sorry, what was your question?
It's 220. It's not the standard. Yeah.
Yes. Level 1 chargers are just the 110.
Was just double-checking that. Okay. Thank you.
Well, I had an excellent meeting with staff, just as a general comment, and I'd like to, I'm glad that the language relating to BE5 is being amended to emphasize fuel source and emission reduction, and also simplifying the language as it relates to EV charging, which I think is critically important as we move forward. But I have no comments at this point, so what I will do is I will declare the public hearing open and open the public comment opportunity. And nobody is signed up, and there were no written comments, so I will therefore close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing closed. And therefore, we'll move to Commission deliberations and action.
Just want to thank staff for the report and for the direction on how to efficiently review this document.
Okay. I'm glad some of you found the efficient way of reading the document. I ended up with all 200 pages. Okay, so thank you. Next time, I'll get smarter. But any other comments? If not...
I will bring this up. Thank you for the staff report. I brought it up in my briefing. We talked about the service level of the chargers once installed, right? Do they have a target for availability, just having them installed if half of them are not functioning? And I remember, I believe your comment was that it's up to the, either contracted charging company, ChargePoint or whomever, to maintain those. But if I remember correctly, we said we could have a performance minimum number. We might add that once this was approved. Do I remember that correctly? I don't think CJ was in my briefing.
So with respect to maintenance of EV chargers once installed, publicly funded chargers do have certain state and federal requirements, but not all EV chargers are publicly funded. So privately funded chargers don't really have any maintenance requirements at this time that we're aware of. But we could certainly look into potentially maintenance standards for EV chargers, and that's something we're doing some research on, my city attorney's office and Development Services. But that's still an ongoing project, and so we don't have a proposed solution for you tonight. And if we did, I think it would be something that would live outside the cap document, but we're still working on the specifics of that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. I couldn't recall the discussion exactly, and it happened to me. I went into the ChargePoint app, and I saw that a charger was available, and it was at my office, of all places. And I got there, and there was a tag on it that it wasn't working properly, so I wasn't able to charge. So just having the equipment installed is great, but making sure that it is functional would be even greater. So a service level agreement or a performance standard, when we get there, would be desired. I have no further questions.
That's an excellent point. Thank you. Okay. Given any other questions or thoughts about it? If not, do I have a motion on this agenda item?
Chair Singhah, I move to adopt a resolution recommending that the City Council adopt the addendum to the Environmental Impact Report for the Climate Action Plan and Elk Grove Municipal Amendments Project. Approve the proposed amendments to the Climate Action Plan and adopt an ordinance amending the EV charging requirements and definitions in Title 16 and Title 23 of the Elk Grove Municipal Code, all in accordance with the findings in the draft resolution.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? It balances unanimously. Thank you. With that, we will move to Agenda Item 6, which is the regular agenda items for this meeting. If there are no regular agenda items on the agenda, we will move on to the director's report.
Good evening again. I already did a little bit of introduction for Jason, so I'll just let him take the floor if he'd like for a moment to say hi to you all.
I'm very honored and happy to be here. I've always enjoyed visiting Elk Grove, and now I'm thrilled that I get to work and be part of all of the exciting stuff going on. It's been almost three weeks and just really impressed by my colleagues' dedication and enthusiasm for what we do here, and I think it's reflected in the built environment, and I'm just excited and thrilled to be part of that. So, thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to Elk Grove and to the Planning Department and working with the Planning Commission.
All right. So in terms of the balance of the report that's before you, a couple of highlights. In terms of recent approval actions, our new zoning administrator, happy to say I'm no longer the zoning administrator, given my new capacity with the city, Kara Reddick, our deputy city manager, has taken over that position and had her first hearing in October for the DBAT Baseball and Softball Training Academy, which she did approve. We do have a couple of items coming up at December 9th. I think this list is a little bit dated, unfortunately. I think we are just tracking for the REI project and the ARCO AMPM Flatland still needs a little bit more work that we're trying to iron out hopefully quickly. Other council, and jumping back up to the top of the list with council actions, the council did approve the Historic Resources, the Registry of Historic Resources for the city, recognizing all of our existing ones that are on the state and federal list, as well as two sites meeting the qualifications for the local list. We are looking at future rounds of identification of other resources around the community, and those will be coming up in the next couple of years. That mainly goes through the Historic Preservation Committee's work effort, but we can certainly talk about it a future item if you'd like. Council did also approve some amendments to the Poppy Grove Apartments back in October. That project's currently in construction, with the first units hopefully coming online about the first of the year. Not on this list, council did consider at its last meeting the changes in Old Town for the Bars Breweries and Winery. They do have some questions around that and asked staff to go do some additional research and bring it back at a later date. I believe we were targeting February 12th meeting for that. We'll also be doing some engagement with the Historic Preservation Committee and the Old Town Foundation, primarily once we get past Dickens Fair to reach out to them, since they are extremely busy this week. So we'll wait, probably do that. I think HPC, we're going to try to go next month, and Foundation probably after the new year. Other matters, we do have one confirmed for December 5th. You should have your packets. If it hasn't already been provided to you, it'll be ready tomorrow, I believe, right? It'll be ready tomorrow. So we'll have that for you. And then we have nothing coming up for the second meeting, so we'll be looking, I believe, for cancellation of that item. And I believe January 2nd is the next available date, and you probably don't want to be here for that date either, so we'll probably look at two cancellations on your agenda. Is that right, Sandy? All right. I got it right. If you have any questions, happy to answer them. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
That tells, any questions for CJ? No? Okay. With that, we will move to the next agenda item, which is Planning Commission matters. Anything on your, on your thought process that you would like to raise? No, hearing nothing at this point. We will then move on to, I guess there are no other agenda items. I will therefore adjourn the meeting at 6:30 PM, and I look forward to seeing you at the meeting on December 5. Okay? Thank you.